Okay, great. So literally, this is a study session just for you. We're gonna be going over cash trap. Identifying any areas that you feel like you may be struggling, doing a few trading tips, a little bit of analysis on TradingView. Answering any questions and I believe there are just, I think there's just one or there's, I'm gonna go over some stuff, just some beginner stuff on Cashtrap. Just for people who have recently started and who are not familiar with Cashtrap, we're gonna go over that stuff. So make sure that you have your pens, your papers and your questions ready, okay? So we're gonna go straight in into something that you guys know I always wanna talk about. I'm gonna talk about every time that we come on these sessions because I definitely wanna get it ingrained into your mind, okay? And that is the importance of mindset, okay? And we already discussed it in the last session that, you know, trading is actually 10% strategy and 90% mindset, okay? So you need to be working on your mindset on a regular basis. You need to be making sure that you're in control of your emotions. You need to be controlling your emotions because if you're not controlling your emotions, your emotions will control you and that is then going to translate into your trading account, okay? So guys, please make an effort to be in control of your emotions, be, make an effort to take control and actually, you know, work on developing your mindset, do your personal self-development, okay? So you know, last week I shared this quote by Mark Douglas, definitely one of my favorite quotes. Mark Douglas is definitely one of my favorite, favorite authors. He's actually an experienced trader. He's an amazing author and he says, "If you can learn to create a state of mind that is not affected by the market's behavior, the struggle will cease to exist." And we already discussed about that last week, that you actually have to put the work in because it says you need to create. That means that you actually have to step forward and put the work in to actually make that state of mind. And that means you've gotta go out there and do your personal self-development, okay? So that was a quote for last week, but for this week, I really wanna focus on this. The consistency that you seek is in your mind and not in the markets, okay? So again, this is another quote by Mark Douglas, an amazing, amazing, um, author, writer, literally, he's an amazing guy, amazing trader. So he literally says, "The consistency that you seek is in your mind and not in the markets." So that means again, you have to do the work, you have to make the effort, okay? You have to go out there and make sure that you are being focused. So in all honesty, I really wanna just open up the question, like how focused have you been on your trading plan? Because that's a part of the consistency, because actually the traders that you see, these millionaire traders, Matthew Fayer, Millie Mills, Dr. Joshua Lee and Brandon Boyd, one thing that they did was be consistent. They were very consistent and they were disciplined. So these are two things that you may wanna just write in big capital letters, consistency and discipline. Those two things are going to take you very, very far in trading, okay? Consistency and discipline, right? You need to be very consistent with your trading plan. You need to be very disciplined with how you're trading. I will definitely say this and I say this all the time, Matthew Fayer did not get to where he got to by over leveraging. He didn't get to where he got to by not following his trading plan. So how focused have you been on your trading plan, guys? How many days have you actually been consistent? And be honest about it, I want you to drop in the chat, you know, over this week, so it's been three days out of the week. Over this week, how many days have you been consistent with your trading plan? If it's three, you know, meaning Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, drop three in the chat. If it's one, drop one. Just be honest, we're gonna hold you accountable here. How many days have you actually been consistent with your trading plan, okay? You know, literally sticking to the trading plan, making the money that is written down on the trading plan, crossing out the days and moving on to the next. So how many days, guys? So there's only one person that has answered, so does that mean that only one person has, has stuck to their trading plan? Because if that's the case, that's not good at all. So two, so Pablo has sticked to his trading plan, has stuck to his trading plan for three days out of the, out of the week. That's very, very good, you're practicing, practicing discipline. And then someone has also said two, so guys, no one else has stuck to their trading plan this week? Okay, so what about last week, guys? What about last week? Drop your numbers for last week. Out of five, how many days did you actually stick to your trading plan? How many days? Was it one, two, three, four, was it five? Did you stick to it for the full five? Drop it in the chat, how many days did you stick to your trading plan? How many days did you actually hit your target, shut your laptop and then move on? If you didn't do it, because I'm not seeing any numbers in the chat. If you didn't do it, then you really, really, really have to, you have to look, you have to look at yourself. Okay, so you was at work. Okay, so you can definitely work around your schedule. And that's really what I wanna talk about. I really, really wanna talk about just being consistent. Because there's seven participants in the chat, including myself, so you know, I'll drop my number here as well. So I'm gonna be honest, last week for me, it was four, okay? I stuck to my trading plan four days out of the week, four days out of a five-day weekend. There is no excuses for the reason why, for, for me not doing it for the fifth day. I'm not gonna make up excuses because at the end of the day, it's all about your organization. I know there's seven of us in the chat and only three of us have managed to stick to the trading plan last week. So guys, this is really, really, really key. You need to make sure that you're following your trading plan. If you haven't been following your trading plan, guys, print out a new one and follow it again. Print out a completely new one and stick to it because discipline is really gonna take you far. Consistency is gonna take you far. Because as it says, the consistency that you seek is in your mind, okay? You need to create that level of consistency within yourself in order for you to get consistent results. And of course, that's fine, Dave, I already know you haven't got a trading plan, but that is fine. You're gonna get one today, Pablo's gonna sort you out with a trading plan ASAP. Uh, but listen, guys, you need to be sticking to your trading plan, okay? If you have not dropped a number in, in the chat, write in capital letters, "I need to commit to sticking to my trading plan." Okay, so, um, and also with the guys that weren't able to stick to the trading plan or even just follow it at all, why is the, what is the reason that is hindering your ability to be consistent? You know, we asked, we asked the honest questions. How are you not considering yourself to be consistent? Okay, and also if you're, if you're planning to make a withdrawal, if you're actually planning to make a withdrawal, please make sure that you fit that into your trading plan as well, okay? Because you know, you have the option to, um, either, you know, have it where you're not withdrawing at all. So it will be 100% reinvestment rate or you're withdrawing a certain percentage on a regular basis. So make sure you input that into your trading plan, have everything organized, guys. And that's the only way that you'll be able to get to the next goal. So guys, come on, I need some energy in the chat. The people that did not say five, if you did not say five, just like Pablo, I need you to type in capital letters, "I need to commit to sticking to my trading plan." Okay, I'm gonna need you guys to be very, very serious here because one thing I do not do is, is any slacking. We're very, very serious in this team because we're all trying to get to a next level. So if you did not drop a five in the chat for next week, then you need to be sticking to your trading plan. You need to commit to at least seven days of sticking to a trading plan, okay? Amazing, amazing. We need to be committed and we need to be consistent, okay? Don't expect consistency from anywhere else unless we're going to give it to ourselves, okay? And one thing I need to also point out is just being more organized, just becoming more organized, okay? Become more organized. What I really wanna do and what I've been doing with a couple of people is just really pressing on the fact of organization. Because really and truly, you probably don't put organization consistency and trading altogether, but let me tell you this. These three things go hand in hand. If you are not organized, if you're not consistent, your results will not show up, okay? So when I'm talking about organization, organization is actually, you know, organizing your day is the difference between, you know, actually having a day-to-day plan where you're in control of the day and actually just going away with the world, with the way of the world, you know, and letting the day just pass you by and you're not in control. Guys, we wanna be in control of the day, okay? You wanna make sure that you're accomplishing every single goal that you have set out to achieve, okay? Every single goal. So you definitely want to make sure, if you haven't already organized a schedule for yourself, you know, if you're a type of person who doesn't like to follow schedules and you just like to have like a generic plan, even that, if you haven't organized something for yourself in order to help yourself stay on track, then you need to do that ASAP. Do not allow your day to go with the way of the world and your tasks don't get completed, okay? So listen, what I'm actually gonna do, I'm gonna show you my, my little book that I use, okay? Guys, this is my time management book. I write in this book every single day, every single day. And what it has here, what it has here is it has like hours, it's literally written hour by hour, starts at 5:00 AM, finishes at 1:00 AM and literally I write down everything that I'm gonna do every single hour by hour, okay? And the reason for that is because I'm not gonna allow time to escape me. I'm not gonna allow myself to go away with the way of the world because I need, I have goals that I need to accomplish and there's things that I need to do, okay? So it should be the exact same thing with you guys. You need to, what you need to do, I'm gonna give you a simple, how many steps is it? Four steps into organizing your week. Try it for a week, I promise you will find me later. Try it for a week, stick to it for a week and you'll be able to see the results flow in, okay? So the first thing you need to do, write a list of all the things that you want to accomplish on a day-to-day. So that could be watching a training video, watching a leadership video, uh, spending an hour on trading, um, I don't know, cooking a healthy meal, exercising, whatever it is that you wanna accomplish on a day-to-day, write a list, okay? Write a list, okay? The second thing you wanna do is write out a list of times that require you to either be committed to a, a, a task that you can't change or that you're gonna be busy. So that could be something like work, church, meetings, whatever it is that you're doing on a day-to-day, you wanna write out those times so you can blank that out, okay? The third thing is, is you wanna filter in one hour slots, one hour is not even a lot of time, 60 minutes. One hour slots, guys, for you to accomplish the task that you set out in step one, okay? So you wanna do, let's say for example, 12:00 PM you're gonna do training, 1:00 PM you're gonna do, um, a session of trading, 7:00 PM you're gonna jump into the graph session, um, 12, 11:00 AM you're gonna go to the gym. Attach a time to everything, okay? And write that, this is the fourth step, write it on your whiteboard and stick to it, okay? Write it on your whiteboard or on a piece of paper, stick it on your wall and stick to it. Literally, um, I don't have my whiteboard because it's in my room upstairs, but if I had it, I would even just show you. Like, I'm not gonna tell you something that I don't do myself. I have my time management book and I also write my day-to-day task on a whiteboard and I attach a time. Now guys, I'm gonna run through it with you again. First thing, write a list of all the things you need to accomplish on a day-to-day, okay? Second thing, write a list of times that you're gonna be busy and you can't change it, you know, things like work, church, meetings, gym, whatever the case may be. The third thing is filter in at least one hour slots to do the things that you wanna do, to accomplish the task that you're trying to accomplish. So that could be training, trading, uh, you know, cooking, going to the gym, you know, having an hour of meditation, whatever it is that you need to do, personal self-development, whatever it is, make sure you filter it in, guys. And then the fourth thing, write it out and stick to it. Try it for seven days. I'm gonna catch up with you in seven days and find out how you guys are getting on with it, but literally try it for seven days and you'll be able to see the results, okay? Because at the end of the day, you need to be keeping in tune with your education and keeping in tune with your mindset and what's going on in the world, guys. So don't let the, don't let the, um, day just pass you by, definitely be in control. And, um, again, just to reiterate on mindset, I really do wanna ask, like, how many, what have you guys been doing this week to actually be developing your mindset? What is your audio of the week? What is your book of the week? If you do not have one, you know, take one from someone in the chat, drop it in the chat. If you've been reading or listening to something this week, I wanna know what it is, you know, share it with the group, you know, that may be able to help someone because you definitely wanna make sure that you're sticking to at least one form of audio or book every single week, guys. You're not gonna be able to develop your mind on your own, okay? So you need to make sure that you're, whatever it is, if you read the Bible and you use that as to personally develop yourself, make sure you're doing that on a regular basis. If it's David M. Moniz, eh? Make sure you're listening to that on a reg- regular basis. So I can see that nobody has, um, yes, rich dad, poor dad, that's very good. Conceive, believe and achieve, that's my actual favorite audio. That's my favorite audio, I probably know it word for word now. That's very, very good. Okay, guys, literally, the Bible daily, exactly, exactly. Think and grow rich, guys. If you don't have an Audible account, you can actually get a free trial and, and get some, um, some, some books that you can listen to, guys, try it out, get an audible, listen to it while you're walking. Just make sure that you're constantly developing your mind because as I said, as I said to you guys, you need to make sure that you're in control of your mind and your emotions before you're getting into those markets, okay? So great, great, great. Moving on to, um, risk management, you guys know I talk about this all the time. I'm gonna talk about it until it's dead. You need to make sure you're sticking to your trading plan. If you don't have one, make sure that you get one ASAP and stick to it. There is no need to stray away from it. This is essentially your Google Maps to your success. So stick to your trading plan, guys. And the next thing that I also wanna go over is just the importance of, you know, utilizing the entire package. Guys, you know, you're paying for a package, you wanna make sure that you're using every single part of it. I don't know how many people are actually studying FRX, DCX. You don't have to just study HFX, guys. You can definitely explore and study FRX and DCX, guys, as well. And literally, I just posted in, um, what I could fit in there, which was a, um, screenshot of just some profits that I, I used from SwipePoint. Guys, if you're not using SwipePoint, please don't miss out. Um, I, I believe, yes, in the group chat, in the group chat, there is a new timetable which includes SwipePoint training. I definitely recommend that you guys fit that into your schedule. Cryptocurrency right now is a really, really serious asset, it's the most appreciable asset right now, okay? So you definitely wanna be getting involved in the DCX and FRX Academy, guys. Don't leave it out. I mean, how many people have actually downloaded an MT4 account? You know, how many people have downloaded SwipePoint, HFX Swipes, Steady? Literally, you want to be utilizing the entire platform, alright? You wanna utilize the entire platform. So I'm definitely just gonna make sure that I reiterate that stuff just until you guys get it. And just until I hear people telling me they're on DCX training or they've taken a HFX Swipes trade or they've taken a SwipePoint trade, utilize it, it's really, really good, especially if you've got a lot going on. It allows you to hit your targets at a faster rate rather than just jumping in on the sessions, okay? Which is still a really, really great thing to do. So, um, great, 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 great. So I'm now going to, um, you know, I've covered all the, the basics, I've covered the intro. Um, what I wanna do right now is not that. I just want to do a quick little recap on Cashtrap, guys. Just a quick recap on, on Cashtrap, just to make sure we're all at the same stage. And I know everyone is familiar with Cashtrap, so I'm just gonna do a quick recap, just to, you know, make sure that we're all at the same page, okay? So if you can see my screen, please let me know, drop a one in the chat. I'm not sure if you guys are able to see my screen. If you can see my screen, please let me know. Great, 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 you can see my screen, that's amazing. So guys, listen, this is Cashtrap, this is what we're looking at, when we're looking at Cashtrap, okay? So obviously, what, what we have here is Cashtrap 3.0, okay? So if you don't know already, okay, Cashtrap 2.0 didn't actually have this cool score, okay? It doesn't actually tell you how many points that are there in order for you to go into a trade, okay? So the actual point of Cashtrap 3.0 is just to make it easier for people who are, you know, maybe not as familiar with, with the point system to actually identify, you know, what a good trade is and what a bad trade is. And just for people who do not know already, can you guys drop in the chat what the minimum entry requirements for a trade is? What are the points? What is the minimum amount of points you should be entering in for a trade? Just drop it in the chat for those who are not familiar, five, thank you, five. We literally want to be waiting for a cool score of five points before we end, a, a score of five points, not a cool score, but a score of five points before we entering into a trade, okay? And that is just because we wanna enter into the best trades possible. We definitely don't want to be cheating ourselves by rushing into the market, okay? So just to quickly explain the point system, okay? Getting into a trade, regardless of what you're doing, if it's, if it's HFX, Forex, cryptocurrency, getting into a trade requires a certain level of confirmations, okay? You need a certain amount of confirmations to confirm that this particular trade or wherever you think the market is going, is actually going in the direction that is, that you believe that it's going. You need a certain amount of confirmation. And with Cashtrap, what it is, it's a combination of different confirmations utilizing indicators, alright? These are all indicators that you can find in, in TradingView. So it's a compilation of indicators which are giving you an indication that a trade is going in a particular way, whether it be up or down, okay? So with Cashtrap, you can have a maximum of seven points, okay? And you get those seven points from seven separate indicators. The first one is the arrow. The arrow is worth one point, okay? I'm gonna explain it a little bit, you know, afterwards, if you're not familiar with this kind of stuff, if you are, don't worry. The second thing is the currency strength meter, which is over here. And you can also find the currency strength meter at the live charts website, there you go. We also utilize this to identify the currency strength of a particular trade. And what we're talking about when we're looking at the currency strength is, you know, when the first currency in the pair is stronger, we're looking for a call or that, that means that the market is going to be moving upwards. When the second currency in the currency pair is stronger, you're looking for the market to be moving downwards, okay? So, uh, essentially that is the currency strength meter. The Bollinger Bands, okay, this is, it's demonstrating, it's the statistical, sorry guys, the statistical movement, okay? It's demonstrating momentum. So we did actually talk about Bollinger Bands already last week, but I'm gonna go over it again, just so it's fresh in your mind. So these are the Bollinger Bands, okay? So these are also, you know, equal to one point. And how you, um, how that point is awarded is if the price is actually pushing against either the top or the bottom of the Bollinger Bands, okay? If price is actually pushing against the top, the top side or the bottom side like it is here, that's indicating that the price is either going to be, be moving upwards or downwards, so that is, you know, worth one point. And support and resistance line, guys. Support and resistance is these little dash lines here, which are generated by Cashtrap. Cashtrap have identified areas in which the market is, uh, reacting to. Cashup have identified, and identified areas in which the market may hit a certain point and reverse. As you can see, market, the market has hit this line right here and reversed. The market has hit this line and reversed. The point of the support and resistance in Cashtrap is just to identify certain entry points where you may wanna go in for a reversal trade, okay? And the next thing is the B and the S indicator on the stochastic, okay? So this indicate, this, um, little chart right here, I'm gonna enlarge it so you can see. This is actually a stochastic indicator, okay? The type of stochastic where, you know, you're able just to see an S and a B. And the purpose of it is just to indicate when prices reach oversold areas, uh, which will be here, down here, and when prices reach overbought areas. Now, when prices in an oversold area, you're looking to buy, okay? And that's the purpose of the B. And when price is in an oversold area, you're looking to sell and that is the purpose of the S. And how you would identify a point in this case is you will be looking for the most recent letter. So obviously, the most recent letter in this case is a B. So you'll be counting that as one point if you were just looking for a buy trade. Okay, and then the next thing I'm gonna talk about is the RSI. So it's actually the bottom, the bottom chart right here, this is the RSI, I'm gonna double click to expand, okay? This is the RSI. The RSI is actually a momentum indicator, okay? So it's indicating the momentum of price right now at a four-period movement, okay? I'm gonna explain all that in a minute, but it's indicating the momentum of price at the moment and the, the timeframe that it's on, I believe this is four periods, yeah? So this is a length of four periods, okay? So, um, then the next thing is, um, oh, just to reiterate, sorry, so we've got the, um, the RSI. And what we're looking for in order to get a point with the RSI is we're looking for the RSI chart to be reaching past the red line. When, when price has reached past the red line, it's considered to be overbought, okay? It's considered to be overbought and you'll be looking for a reversal. And that reversal would look like a cross down over the red line, okay? So just to reiterate, when price is reaching past the red line, it's considered to be overbought, okay? And in order for you to look for sell positions, you need to be looking for the arrow to be crossing down just as it, just that, as it has done in this case, it will be right there, price has crossed down. And likewise, when price reaches past the green line, okay, it's considered to be oversold. So you're going to be looking for buying opportunities. Your entry point will be when, uh, price manages to cross over the green line, okay? And then we've also got the stochastic, which is just the one above, it's the one in the middle, I'm gonna double click to expand. So essentially with the stochastic, we're looking for the same thing, okay? You, you are counting it as a point when price crosses down over the red line, uh, for a sell. And if you're looking for a buy, you can't as a point when price crosses up over the green line, okay? So guys, um, I know some of you are already familiar with that. If you're unsure, please let me know. If this is the first time that you're seeing this, please don't worry because I'm sure that there's a lot of years that are going to be able to help you to understand this. This is just to provide you with some perspective. But if you guys are, um, okay with what I'm saying, drop a one in the chat. If not, say wait a minute, please don't feel shy to say wait a minute, I'm happy to re-explain anything if necessary. If you guys are with me, please drop a one in the chat and I will definitely proceed, okay? Amazing, great, great, great. Okay, okay, I'm gonna move forward. Okay, so, um, essentially, again, just to reiterate what we spoke about last week, what we're looking at when we're looking at all these different indicators is, you know, something called fundamental, sorry, not fundamental, technical indicators, okay? These are all examples of technical indicators. So what I'm talking about when we're saying technical indicators is essentially they're indicators that are demonstrating, you know, the movement of price. And because they're demonstrating the movement of price, they're allowing us to make predictions of where price is going to go, okay? So, you know, as you guys know already, we're looking at two types of indicators when we're looking at analyzing price and price movement, and that is technical and fundamental, okay? How we access the fundamentals is through, uh, things like Forex Factory. It's literally just about the news, politics, social, um, economics, okay? So we would be heading over to Forex Factory, just to give you guys a little bit of perspective about what that looks like. Okay. Okay, so we're looking at Forex Factory, guys. So essentially, what we're looking at when we're looking at Forex Factory is essentially is giving us the news, it's telling us what's happening around the world, okay? It's telling us what type of information we should be looking out for when we're trading. So as you can see here, this is, this is data from May 20th, so it's not completely relevant. But, um, just for perspective, you can see here that, you know, all of these, you've got a lot of yellow folders, we've got orange one and we've also got a red folder, okay? So a good rule of fun is yellow folders don't tend to influence the market very much, okay? You can see here, when you hover over it, hover over it, it says that there is low impact expected, okay? So yellow folders doesn't normally have that much of an impact on the market, but I would always say just make sure that you're fully aware of what it is that, that could potentially affect the market, okay? Now, orange folders are definitely things to consider, okay? It doesn't have as much impact, but you know, it, it depends on the news. It, it could have an impact, but you wanna be again, aware of what is, that's going on. Red folders now definitely have an impact on the market, okay? So if you go ahead and click it, um, you click it, you expand it by clicking this little button here, okay? You'll be able to actually see what it is that this news is referring to. And really, the main thing that you're looking at is usually the forecast, if it has any forecast figures here. And this section here, why traders care, okay? Because you're trying to ascertain what it is that could potentially be affecting the market. Is it affecting the market in a good way or a bad way, okay? So this is the types of, uh, information that you're gonna be looking at when it comes to fundamental analysis, guys, okay? So guys, do you guys have any questions about anything before I proceed? Let me know if you have any questions before I move forward on to just a little bit of analysis. So let me know if you have any questions. If you're good, if you're ready to go, drop some sevens in the chat and I will continue. Let me know where you guys are at, let me know where you guys are at. Okay. Great, 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 you're all good. Okay, good, good. Amazing. So what we're gonna do, so you guys understand the concept of Cashtrap, you understand the, the concept of the indicators, you know, the support and resistance and etc. I just want to reiterate a little bit about, um, what we discussed about, um, Bollinger Bands, okay? Because, you know, we discussed Bollinger Bands last week. What do you guys, tell me, uh, you know, one or two things about what you remember from Bollinger Bands from last week? Before I go into it, here is, you know, the Bollinger Bands on, um, TradingView. I've got my TradingView chart up here. What key things do you guys remember from Bollinger Bands? If it's nothing, let me know and I can go over it again, but what key things do you guys remember? That you're looking out for from Bollinger bands? What is it that you guys are looking out for with the Bollinger bands, how are the Bollinger bands able to help you to? You know, ascertain the types of trades that you should be going into and shouldn't be going into? You know, drop it in the chat, guys, where are you guys at with the Bollinger band, how much information do you have on that? Yeah, great, indicate the trend of the market, okay? Okay, cool, that's fine, what we're gonna do, we'll go over it again because. Honestly, guys, this is really, really key information when it comes to actually ascertaining the trend, okay, really, really key information, so. Yeah, general, if I understood, you're definitely right. Because what it is that we're doing when we're looking at Cashtrap, we want to be trading with the trend, okay, I'm sure you've heard it before, the trend is your friend. So you wanna be trading with the direction of the trend, okay? So. In order for you to trade with that, the direction of the trend. You need to identify certain indicators that can help you understand what the trend is, what trend that you're in, okay? So one of the indicators that we look at, well, actually two of them, which I'm gonna mention, is the EMA and the Bollinger bands, okay? So just to give you some perspective, um, you know, EMA and Bollinger band are actually already cased on Cashtrap for us. So what we've got right here, uh, we're gonna use a different chart, something that's a little bit better. Okay, I like this one, this looks great, okay, cool. So, EMA, guys, I'm gonna make this line purple, just so you can see. So essentially, the purpose of the EMA and the Bollinger band is really just to identify the trend, the purpose of it within Cashtrap. Is really just to identify the trend, because you want to be trading with the trend, okay, that's how you make your profit. So what we have right here is, you know, when, this is the EMA line, guys. This is the EMA line, and what we're looking at when we look at the EMA line is when price is trending above the EMA line, okay, that means we're in an uptrend. Okay, when price is trending below the EMA line, that means we're in a downtrend, okay, so as you can currently see. We are in a, we're in an uptrend, sorry, okay, so we've been in an uptrend. We've been in an uptrend just after this point of consolidation, there was also a downtrend happening. But as you can see, we are still currently in an uptrend and price is just correcting itself and now making its way back up. Okay, so again, when you're, when price is trending above the EMA line, you're in an uptrend, okay? Just like this right here, you can see price is clearly trending above the EMA line, we were in an uptrend, okay? So let me see an example of a downtrend, so you guys can see. Okay, so this is, um. That price was actually appreciating for once. Okay, right, so here is one, here's an example, okay, the line is going red again, so I'll pop into the public. So here you can see price is actually below the EMA, okay? So what's happening here is price is actually trending downwards. So what you'd be looking for is downward arrows, so do remember that, guys, when you're looking at the EMA, okay, when price is actually above. The the thick EMA line, you're gonna be looking to take upward arrows, because that's the direction of the trend. When price is trading below the EMA line, you wanna take downward arrows, because that's the direction of the trend, okay? And really and truly, guys, that will support your trading, the more you trade with the trend, the more profit that you'll be able to see, okay? You will just have in the back of your mind, okay, we're in an upwards trend, so it seems like if I was just taking pulls, I would have a lot more profit than if I was taking puts. Okay, you can clearly see that right here, there is some put acting happening right here, or you can see, you can see more pulls than puts, and you'll be making more money with buying and selling, okay? So that's what we're looking at when we're looking at EMA line, but the Linter Band now, guys. So the Bollinger band, guys, it's essentially, it's a statistical chart, okay? It's just a little bit clearer on Trading View, so I'm gonna show you on Trading View, the Bollinger band is a statistical chart, guys. So really and truly, what it's doing is it's just demonstrating price and volatility, volatility. So it's demonstrating the direction that price is going in, and also the volatility that it's going through as it's trending, okay, so. As you can see right here. Essentially, you know, we've got price trending downwards. And you know, what price is doing is it's hugging against the Bollinger band, when price is trending upwards, it's hovering towards the top of the Bollinger band, okay? So essentially, what we're looking at, essentially is the the direction, it's showing you the direction. And the trend of the market, and it's really, really easy, okay, as I said, when. Price is hovering the top of the Bollinger band, you're in an uptrend, when price is hovering the bottom of the in, the Bollinger band, you're in a downtrend, okay? And it is normally very, very clear. And what you're looking for when you're looking at consolidation is literally when price is trending in between. The Bollinger band, it's neither pushing the top or the bottom, it's just trending in between, okay? And just a little tip that I mentioned in last week's session about the Linter Band. Is when you can see that the Bollinger band is beginning to narrow, if I look at a bigger timeframe, that means that it's changing direction, guys. So you can see right here. We had quite a wide, we have quite a wide space between the top and the bottom of the Bollinger band, guys, we had quite a wide space. And price was trending upwards. When we started to get to this place here, it started to narrow. We've got some consolidation and it was a change in direction, price was losing momentum. Okay, so again, there was another narrowing here in this section here, price tended upwards. Narrowed here, price went downwards, so when you, whenever you're seeing a narrowing within the Bollinger bands. You know that price is about to change direction, whether it be upwards, downwards, or losing momentum and going into consolidation, okay? So. That's what we're looking at when we're looking at the Linder bands on Trading View. Now, Bollinger bands on Cashtrap now is a completely different thing, okay, so. What we're looking at, it looks a little bit more messy, and that's because there are three different Bollinger bands. Cased on here, they're formatted into two different, into three different time periods. And it's cased on to Cashtrap for you, okay? And the purpose of that, and why that's really, really helpful to us. Is because ninety-eight percent of price data remains within those Bollinger bands, okay? Ninety-eight percent of price data remains within the Bollinger bands. So what that means is that we know when to look for a reversal, okay? If ninety-eight percent of price data remains within the Bollinger band. That means that when price data does push outside of the Bollinger, the Bollinger band, at that two percent of time. Okay, it's not gonna last very long outside, right, as you can see here, we have one candlestick that is outside. Before price started to see a reversal downwards. Okay, literally right here, um, we have some whicking happening, just outside the Bollinger band. Price, um, start to see a momentum downward, so you're, what you're looking at here is essentially a reversal, it gives you an indication of a reversal. Okay, so that is actually the purpose of the Bollinger band, so guys. If that's making sense to you, if you're with me on Bollinger band and on the EMA line. Drop some sevens, drop some sixes, drop some fives in the chat, let me know, give me some energy and I will move forward, guys. Let me know where you guys are at, if you need me to explain anything, say wait a minute, and I can go over again. Okay, guys. Okay, good, look good on the Linder band. So guys, do you have any questions at all about anything that I said, I know it's a lot of information. And that some of you have heard it already, are you guys, do you have any questions, if you have any questions? I'm gonna give you a couple minutes to unmute and just let me know where is it you need to. Ask any questions, and then if there's no questions, I can move on, so just let me know, guys, do you guys have any questions? Is there anything that you need to go over with Cashtrap, EMA, the Linder bands, um. Friend, uh, fundamentals, uh, technical indicators, is there anything that you guys have any questions on, cool? Great, guys. Guys, all fast learners. Okay, good. So now, what I actually wanna talk about, and I actually wanted to go into a little bit of, um. Just talking about the RSI, okay, the RSI is actually a momentum indicator, guys. So RSI, when we, um, when we're trying to find RSI on Trading View, um, you go ahead and click this, uh, F. Indicator, it's F icon. You would have to type it in, mine is all favorited. You type in relative strength index, and it's one of the built-in indicators, and then go ahead and start it so that you can access it more easily, guys. Okay, so, um, once you clicked it, it will pop up on your screen, okay, and what we're looking at right here. Is a fourteen period RSI timeframe, RSI indicator. And what it means when I'm saying fourteen period is that is demonstrating it over fourteen timeframe, I mean, over fourteen periods of the timeframe. So fourteen lots of fifteen minutes, if that makes sense, okay? So how it is on on our glass is a little bit different, it's a four period RSI, so it's four lots of five minutes, you can see it right there, no, sorry, that's just stochastic. So it's a four period RSI, so it's four lots of that timeframe. So whenever you see, you know, the length, it's literally just that length. Times the timeframe, and that's how they've got gotten those results, so essentially. What the RSI, as I said, RSI is a relative strength index, guys, so RSI is essentially just demonstrating the momentum of price, okay? It's demonstrating the momentum of price, okay? And also, just to go over the Bollinger band just quickly, okay, so that, the black line in between, it's red on my chart. But the black line in between is actually a moving average, okay, it's a moving average. And the moving average works very similar to the, um, exponential moving average, the EMA line, the purple EMA. The moving average works very similar to that, so in the way that if. The moving average is trending above price, if price is trending below the moving average during a downtrend. If price is trending above the moving average during an uptrend. And if price is trending at the moving average, just as it is at this point here, you're literally in a consolidation period. So that's what that is, okay? So, um, okay, so back to, um, the RSI, guys, RSI is essentially just demonstrating the momentum, okay, it's demonstrating the momentum. The momentum at different timeframe and at different, um, stages of the market. Okay, so when you're looking at the RSI, you definitely want to make sure that you're understanding that it's a momentum indicator, it's indicating different types of momentum. And also divergent away from a particular trend during certain market phases. So what I mean by that is that you wanna make sure that you're identifying the market phase that you're in. So do you guys know the three types of market phases? Drop it in the chat, if you know the three types of market phases, let me know. I'm gonna go over it anyways, if you know the three types, even if you know one, you know two, drop it in the chat, if you don't know, I'm here to tell you. Okay, guys, you have no answer, so that's cool, so the three types of market phases, so the first one is expansion, okay? The second one is consolidation, and the third one is trending, okay? So, uh, what would be best if I explain, um, trending, okay? So let me show you right here, guys. So what we have right here. You've got a downward trend, okay, this is a downward trend. This is obviously considered a trending timeframe, this is considered as a trending market phase, so. What what's happening right now is the market is trending downwards, okay? And then what you'll often see. Is shortly after a trend, you'll see some movement, uh, you'll see some consolidation movement, okay? Or you'll see an expansion movement. So what we've got here, you know, we've got an expansion, if I actually go to a different timeframe. Um, a different currency pair. Okay, guys, perfect. So guys, what we have here, this is even, this is actually a much better chart to even demonstrate this, okay, this is better. So what we have here, I'm on a five-minute timeframe chart, okay, so every candle is worth five minutes. What we have here is, the first thing I'm gonna tell you about is, um, consolidation, okay? So we've got consolidation during this phase here, okay, it starts about here and about here, okay? So what's happening during the consolidation period is price is essentially finding a better price, okay, there's a lot of liquidity in the market. And there are order sizes, um. There are order sizes in in this area and also in this area, okay? And what that means is I actually work for a cryptocurrency firm, okay, so we actually have. Technology which allows us to place orders in the market at these prices here or at these prices here, okay? So what's happening is before we even get to that point, the market is trying to find a better price. So that's why it's in consolidation, it's correcting itself, finding a better price, okay? But what's also happening is there are orders down here in the market that are trying to be filled. So after you're coming out of your consolidation period. You go into an expansion phase where price is essentially getting rid of the orders that it has below. Which is right here, and fulfilling the orders that it has above, which will be right here as well, okay, so. You've got downwards and an upwards, that's not a particular trend, price is literally just fulfilling the orders that were happening whilst it was in a consolidation phase, okay? And then what would happen afterwards is it would, you know, continue expanding and then it would trend either upwards or downwards, okay? And obviously, an example of of a nice trending time, this is an example of a nice trending, trending time right here. This all the way down to here, that's a good example of a trending time before it starts to consolidate. Expand a little, consolidate, expand a little, and then go upwards a bit, okay? So that's what we're looking at, where we're looking at the different market phases, okay, so we have the expansion. Where price is fulfilling orders at either the top or the bottom, okay, so fulfilling orders that in this space or this space, okay? We have consolidation where price is trying to find a correct, a correct price, it's correcting itself, fulfilling the liquidity in the market. And then we also have a trending phase where price is either just going upwards or downwards, okay, does that make sense, guys, drop a one in the chat if you're with me? Let me know if you guys are with me. Okay? Great, 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 so we have different, we have different, um. It, the market phases, we have different market phases, so make sure you guys write down those market phases. And how the RSI is actually useful during these market phases is it actually helps you to identify, uh, entry points, okay? Especially when you're looking at different timeframes. But guys, I would always encourage you guys to make sure that you're you're trying to analyze the market at different timeframes. Don't analyze the market in any more than two timeframes, and the reason for that. Is because if you overanalyze the market in too many different timeframes, okay, what you're gonna be looking at. Is a completely different picture in different timeframes, but if I give you an example of what I'm trying to say here. So you can see right here. We're on hourly, right, so let me just use this as an example, let me get my box up. So what we have here is a little bit of consolidation in this section here, okay? And now, if we go up to the, the one hour. If we go up to, let's go up to a higher timeframe, let's look at the two-hour timeframe. Okay, on the two-hour timeframe, okay, the picture is a little bit different, okay, price went upwards. And then it reversed and went downwards, and I'm gonna put like, just a, just a little trend line, I mean, just a little. Uh, resistance line here, just to indicate that price hit this level here and started to travel downwards, okay? And if we go to our area of consolidation. Our area of consolidation is now a part of a downtrend, it's no longer an area of consolidation, okay? So you wouldn't be thinking that price is consolidating at this point, you would just be thinking price is moving downwards. Because it hit this point here and then started to travel downwards, okay? So that's at the two-hour, two-hour timeframe. If you come down to the one-hour timeframe, you'll be thinking the exact same thing, prices hit this point and is now in a downward trend. Okay, and then now, if you go down to the fifteen minutes, then you start to see the consolidation a little bit more, but you still have that downward trend. And then go down to the five minute, okay? So the purpose of me showing that is just to reiterate to you guys that when you're analyzing. So the purpose of me showing that is just to reiterate to you guys that when you're analyzing with too many different timeframes. You're not able to gain a perspective. Because you're seeing things in too many different angles, prices going upwards, downwards. It's consolidating, but it's not going to help you to identify an entry point, okay, so with H effects. You know, with H effects, normally we enter in on on a five minute timeframe, I would, I would advise you to analyze on no more than. A five minute and a fifteen minute timeframe and maybe enter on a one minute timeframe, okay, so. Um definitely just keep that in mind, because I know I have had that question before, don't really exceed the fifteen minute timeframe if you're doing H effects, okay? So. What we're looking at here is on the five minute timeframe, okay? We are at. Let's zoom in. We're in a period of consolidation, okay? So within this box, let me just get rid of it, guys, make sure this is very, very clear. Okay. Right, so there's a lot of price activity have happening at this point here, okay? And there's also a lot of price activity having happening around this point here, okay? I'm not going to mark that green, great. So what we're looking at here, guys, is price is consolidating, price broke through this point here. And started to consolidate upwards downwards within these prices, okay? There's also a level here that I think is is being used as well, so I'll also mark that off. And guys, there is definitely very many levels here, so if you see some levels, definitely you're not incorrect, but I'm just not marking up every single level here, okay? So guys, remember what we what we're looking for when we're looking at uh the RSI, okay? We're looking for areas of overborne oversold conditions, okay? But currently, you know, on this RSI, you're not actually able to see any areas where price is overbought and over oversold, okay? Because of the fact that first of all, we're in a fourteen period timeframe and also because it is consolidating in this timeframe, okay? So essentially, it's not overbought or oversold, it is literally just trending in the middle, okay? So then what you would want to do in order for you to get a good entry point, because that doesn't mean you can't trade this, guys, it doesn't mean. Just because it's in the middle, it doesn't mean you can't trade it, it just means you need to take it down to a smaller timeframe. We will take it down to the one minute. Zoom out a little bit. Take it down to the one minute, okay, and we are with him, perfect. And then you would change the time period of your RSI, because the standard period is fourteen, you would change your time period of the RSI. To what it is on Cashtrap, which is four, okay? Okay, so guys, now what you're able to see here is areas where price has been overbought and areas where price have been oversold, okay? And what you'd also be able to do is identify key entry points, you can see here where I've now marked off the chart. Is literally the areas where price has reversed and dropped back down, okay? It's literally areas where price has reversed and dropped back down, so you want to make sure. That when you are looking at, you know, your RSI, and when you're looking at marking the charts, you want to analyze on a bigger timeframe, guys. You want to analyze on a fifteen minute timeframe or a five minute timeframe, as you saw me do here, I dropped my lines right here, okay? You can drop my lines right here, the the support, the support here and the resistance here, right? Areas where price has been reacting to, drop down to a smaller timeframe, guys, a smaller timeframe. And you're able to see a clearer picture of entry points, okay? Guys, do you have any questions on what I have just said? Any questions on anything I've said, drop it in the chat. Let me know if you guys are with me, drop some sevens in the chat, okay? Let me know if you guys are with me, if you're not sure on anything I'm saying, let me know, drop it in the chat and we can go over them. Okay. So when we're looking at different candle times, okay, when we're looking at different candle times. The purpose of identifying different candle times is so that you can see a clearer picture of where the market is moving, okay? Because we're trading with page effects, okay? You want to make sure that you're looking at a smaller timeframe, because these things are happening here at, you know, one minute intervals. Okay, let me even show you an example of of something, okay? Let's look at the five minute chart. Right. So right, this action right here, okay, just zoom all the way in, I'm going to get my trend line. And what we have here is price has hit this level of seventeen um seven, one thousand seven, one seven nine zero zero, sorry, guys. Okay, and it started to trend upwards. Okay? Okay, guys. So we're on a five minute timeframe now, one of five minute timeframe. Price is now trending upwards, each and every one of these candles are worth five minutes. And what you can see here is there's a lot of buying activity, at the moment, you can't see as much selling activity. Okay, so if you're looking for reversals, it's going to be harder for you to identify, because these things are happening every five minutes, okay? If we now come down to a one minute timeframe. You're able to see a lot more activity here, right, even the wick that we started off with, which was here. Let me just go back. This was a part of one candle now, guys. So all of this activity has now happened in five separate candles, so what you're able to see. Is that there is a lot of selling activity happening, but that the buying activity is stronger, okay? So the purpose of, the purpose of actually looking at the one minute timeframe, looking at smaller timeframes. Is to help you to gain a perspective of what's actually happening within the candle, okay? Because a five minute candle does not actually tell you what's happening every single second of that, of every single minute of that candle. Okay, and a one minute candle is not disadvantageous, it's not at all, you can definitely enter trades in a one minute candle. But the five minute, the five minute timeframe gives you direction, okay? The the bigger timeframes, guys, they give you direction of where the market is going. The smaller timeframes are for your entry points, okay, and let me, let me show you what the the original example again. So as you can see, one of five minute timeframe here. This five minute timeframe is showing me that, you know, when price hits, you know, around this point here, it reverses and goes back down. It's this point, it reverses and goes back down, so I'm able to identify. That there is consolidation happening on this timeframe, okay, it will be the same for the fifteen minute timeframe. We can see that there's consolidation happening between here, you know. And when it hits this point, it reverses, it hit this point in reverse, okay, so that's what we're able to see, we're seeing the direction. Of price on the five minute and the fifteen minute timeframe. But you know, what I'm looking for is a clean entry point, okay? And how we're able to get that, if we look at um, let me. Second, this here. We're looking to enter into this trade, right, what I would be doing is I would be dropping down to the one minute timeframe. I will be dropping down. To the one minute timeframe to get a clearer picture of what's happening here. Okay, you can get a clearer picture of what is happening here, which is that, you know, in this area, this area right here. Is area is is not a strong, it's not a strong uh support or resistance point, it's not a strong resistance point in this case, okay? But it is something that is being, is is very reacting to price, past price history, okay? So you can definitely utilize this point right here as somewhere where you want to be entering trades, because you can see right here. You know, if you were to enter here, you would have got this profit and enter here, you would have got this profit. Okay, so essentially, the point of having a smaller timeframe is to identify entries. The larger timeframe helps you to identify direction, okay? So if it's in the middle, put it onto a smaller timeframe to analyze. Can you um expand on that question a little bit more? I'm not sure what you mean, so with with the smaller timeframe, the time, the smaller timeframes are for your entries, okay? You know, when you're trading with Cashtrap, we trade on a five minute timeframe and that's giving you direction, the one minute timeframes, that's for your entry, that helps you to get a cleaner entry, guys. Let me know if you guys are with me, if you have any more questions. Drop it in the chat, guys, let me know if you guys are with me. Great, 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 I'm going to show you guys another example. Okay, guys. So guys, I'm actually on a five minute timeframe, okay? Just falling through price history, okay, this is a great trend right here, this is a really great trend. So um right now, we've got, this is an uptrend, okay, started at this point here. Okay, and continued up into this point here. And this is on a five minute timeframe. Now, guys, what you're able to see. Is as price moved upwards, constantly use this area, this trend line that I've created. As a resistance, okay, as a point that it has bounced upward, okay? So if you're now, let's say you guys are here, let's say you're at this point here, right? You're not able to see the at this, the rest of the price history up from this point onwards, you're not able to see any price history, okay? I know there's a way to cover it, but I can't remember how to do it, so. You guys are at this point here. So what you'd be looking for is a really good entry point, okay? You know already in the past that price has been, you know, hitting this level and bouncing back up, hitting this level and bouncing back up. But you are looking for a better entry point, okay, so you've identified the trend. Uh you've identified the trend utilizing the five minute timeframe, you can also see with the with the fifteen minute timeframe. Okay, you've been able to identify the trend. With the five and the fifteen minute timeframe, it's very similar with the fifteen minute timeframe, you can still see that upwards trend, okay? But now what you're looking for is a good entry point, okay, because you can't just enter anyway, you need to make sure you're entering at the right price, or at the right point, sorry. So what you're looking for now is is a good entry point, so again, you're here. What you need to do is drop down to the one minute. Bear with me, guys, let's go back and find it. You want to drop down to the one minute, because what the one minute timeframe does is it gives you some more perspective on where to enter, okay? My goodness. One moment, guys. I'm trying to find this again. There you go. Any best. In better June. Okay, I'm not sure why it's not displaying the history, okay, that's fine, that's fine, we'll we'll move forward. But essentially, guys, what would be happening? If Trading View was working and able to show me the price history. What you would be able to see is a breakdown of these candlesticks, okay? You'd be able to see a breakdown of these candlesticks as they made their way to the trend line. Okay, and you'd be able to see where you're looking for a reversal, okay, guys? On top of that, what you'd want to do is you'd also want to be utilizing the RSI in the smaller timeframe. Because what you'd then be able to see is, you can see here, price has reached, price has reached right there, let me expand it. Right there is reaching oversold level, okay? You're able to see that on the smaller timeframe on the RSI, obviously, if you were in a one minute timeframe, this dip will be so much bigger. And you'd be able to see that it's crossing over, but just because, you know, Trading View isn't, you know, working, it's not showing me right now. But just to actually give you some perspective, if we were in a smaller timeframe, you'd be able to see that cross over more clearly. And you'd know when to enter in to get that profit, because, you know, as price is continuing to go upwards. Okay, you guys with me, is that, is that making sense, guys, drop a one in the chat if that is making sense? If you have a question, let me know, unmute yourself, let me know, you know, you guys are very quiet. If you guys are with me, let me know. And we can continue, okay? Okay, cool. Okay, cool, that's fine, okay, so essentially, guys, that was mainly what I wanted to cover, just different timeframes, RSI and reiterate over the Bollinger band, so. Right, yeah, so essentially, what I want you to take away from this. Is that, you know, when you're looking at different time, when you're looking at the actual charts, you want to make sure that you're identifying your market phase, okay? Are you in an expansion phase, are you in a consolidation phase, or are you in a trending phase? If you're in an, if you're in a consolidation phase, okay? You need to be utilizing the RSI in order for you to get your correct entry points, okay? That's what you want to be doing, in a consolidation phase, you want to use the RSI, let me get it back up. Relative strength index. You want to be using the RSI, a four period RSI to identify your entry points, okay, there's a little bit of consolidation here. You want to be entering at points where it's overbought and oversold, okay? And you'll be dropping down, this is all in consolidation phase, guys, you'll be dropping down to your one minute to identify a clean entry point, okay? So in consolidation, utilize your RSI to get your, to get your um identifier, identification of when you're in oversold and overbought conditions. And you want to drop down to your one minute timeframe to get a clean entry point, that that will literally elevate, when you are, when you guys are able to get clean entry points. That will literally elevate your trading to the next level, guys. So if you're in an expansion phase, okay, you need to understand that that trade will not continue for a long time, okay? The the market is fulfilling the orders from above and below, okay, and if you're in a trending phase. You know for a fact that you're either going to be trending upwards or trending downwards, and how you would know that is by using the Bollinger bands to identify. If you're trending upwards, the Bollinger bands will be hugging the top of um the actual cloud. Or if it's an uptrend and hugging the down, the bottom of the actual card if if it's in a downtrend. It needs to have a question. Okay, cool. Can you show us a live example from Cashtrap to Kate Trading View, an example of what, babe, what would you want to see an example of? Um. So guys, listen, that's what I would like you to essentially take from this, you need to be making sure that, you know, you're using your one minute timeframes to identify clean entry points, okay? Um. Because we're running out of time, what I'm going to be doing in the next session anyway, we're going to be going over a little bit more about analyzing on Trading View. Because I definitely want to make sure that you guys are understanding how to actually make these entry points on Trading View. But we're going to be going over analyzing on Trading View. And we're also going to be going over combining, the combination of actually Trading View and Cashtrap, okay? Because that's what takes your trade to a nine out of ten, okay? So guys, thank you for being on this session, before I jump off, is there any questions analyzing the trade to take? Analyzing the trade to take an entry, oh, okay. Okay, quickly, just before I jump off. But guys, before we go any forward, do you guys have any other questions? Do you guys have any other questions, let me know, you can unmute yourself and let me know if you have any other questions. Otherwise, I will give you a quick example and then um we can part ways for tonight.
Where do we get the uh hourglass from?
So you get hourglass by typing in into your browser hourglass dot IM, okay, so you just type in hourglass dot IM. And then just sign in with your credentials that you signed up with and you babies that access our glass.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll have to get that on the favorites. Okay, I'll have to, I'll have to get that on the favorites then.
Yes, make sure you favorite that, that's a very key website. And also guys, TradingView as well, tradingview.com. If you don't have TradingView, listen, you need to get it, okay? It's free to, it's free to get, it's free to use um to get a certain amount of indicators, I believe there is a package that you have to pay for. But just use the free package, even just to get familiar with TradingView, okay? So guys, I'm very conscious of time, I'm just gonna see if there's anything in the market I can see right now. Okay, let's have a look at this. This is actually an example of um, this is an example of consolidation. So what's actually happened here is price was actually in an uptrend, as you can see. Price was in uptrend and then it began to expand, it went through the expansion phase. So trading orders from below and also orders from above, and then it went back into a consolidation phase. Okay, so what you'd wanna do is here, you want to identify your point, um I, you don't want to identify the point where price has been most reactive to. Okay, so you wanna draw your uh, your trend line, I would say about here. Let me make that a bit thicker. And line about here, okay? And that would essentially show you where price has been reactive to in the past history, you know, in this case, okay? So this is actually currently looking at a call and guys, I would definitely say what we have here is, is an S, we've got S, that's the most recent. Price is getting ready to shoot downwards and also we're just in the consolidation in, in the um currency strength meter, okay? So guys, let me change the color of this. Also guys, if you need to um edit the color of anything, literally, you just have to double click. So guys, what I would be looking at in the next, in the next candle would be either I'll be looking for a reversal, so I'll be looking for price to move downwards or I'll be looking for price to break through this trend, okay? You can see through past price history, that price was very strong and broke through this trend. There was an area here where price respected this level, um but after a while, it broke through, shot through this trend using the expansion phase, okay? It went through an expansion phase, filled out the orders that were happening here, filled out the orders that were happening back here, went back into consolidation, okay? So what you wanna do is drop down to your one minute timeframe. And that is going to give you more perspective on your entry point. So what I would probably do, I would probably just move this trend line up here. Okay, you'd wanna move this trend line up here. Wait for price to come back up to this level here, which would be one eight six. When price comes back up, because we're currently in a call, okay? We're currently in a call, as you can see, Cashtrap is a little bit glitchy right now because it's broken down uh five candlesticks into one. That's why, and that's why I recommend that you use TradingView just because it's a clearer picture. And you'd wanna wait for price to go back up to this one eight six line before it starts to come back down. Okay guys, so that should give you a little bit more um perspective on how to identify your entries by changing your um, by changing your timeframes, okay? Okay guys, do you guys have any more questions just before we get off? Do you guys have any more questions? Okay. Guys, has this been helpful to you? Like, is this useful to you? Has this been, you know, helpful to your, you know, your trading, your analysis, you know? Let me know if this has been helpful, let me know if there's anything you want me to cover in the next session. Again, I think I've mentioned to all of you individually anyway that this is not a weekly basis session. You know, it's just whenever it works with my schedule and everyone else's schedule, so um. Listen, we will definitely be back next week with more time. I'm so sorry guys, I had to rush today, but I do have another meeting. But next week we'll be back with more time, so I won't have to rush and we can spend, you know, as long as we need to spend. And you know, what I actually wanna do is, you know, you guys, it's just my team that's on here, okay? Which is goldmine, it's just my team that's on here. So what I really wanted to do is just make things more interactive, like I don't want it to just be me talking. I definitely want it to be a, a situation where you guys are all involved. You're all able to, you know, share your opinion, share any value, whatever it is that you've done in the week that you feel like may be helpful to one another. Because at the end of the day, we are a team and I wanna make sure that you guys are all working together and supporting one another in your trading and making sure that you guys are able to reach the next level together. So listen guys, definitely don't get used to this. Don't get used to it being just me because we are a team and we're learning together, okay?